We are at the Orion Township Municipal Complex Boardroom. I would like to open the Charter Township of Orion Planning Commission meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Reynolds.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
St. Henry.
Here.
Urbanowski.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Cummins, absent with notice. Lovett.
Here.
Be of the quorum.
Thank you very much. This evening, we do have a public hearing at 7:05 for PC 24-16, 111-5 South LaPierre Road rezone. The request is to rezone 111-5 South LaPierre Road, parcel 0914-226-004, from office and professional OP to general business. We will proceed with our regular agenda until the advertised 7:05 time. At that point, I will ask the petitioner to step up to the podium, make a brief presentation, and then we'll open up the citizen portion of the public hearing. If we have any letters, we'll read those into the record, and then the planning commission will have an opportunity to ask questions or comments, and then the petitioner has the ability to respond if they so choose, and then we will close the public hearing and reconvene a regular meeting. With that said, we ask all trips up to the podium be limited to one trip in three minutes, and everyone be respectful of the process. All comments and questions be directed towards myself as the chair of the planning commission. With that said, I'll proceed with our regular agenda. So that leads us back to item number three. We have items three, A, B, and C, a number of meeting minutes from our prior meeting last month on the 17th. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Would the minutes of April 17th under A, B, and C be approved as submitted?
Motion to have support.
Or?
Support by Mr. Walker for their discussion by the planning commission. Seeing none, any public discussion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. That leads us to item number four, agenda review and approval. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I have a motion by Mrs. Urbanowski for their support.
Support.
Support by Mr. St. Henry for their discussion by the planning commission. Seeing none, any public discussion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. That leads us to a brief public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone here looking to make brief public comment? No one racing up to the podium. That leads us to our consent agenda, items A through I. If you so choose, we can approve the consent agenda as submitted. If not, we will pull those items onto our agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion to have support.
Or?
Support by Mr. Walker for their discussion by the planning commission. Any public discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please stay with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. All right, that only took us to 7:03, so we will stall for a couple more minutes here. If you guys want to step up, be ready for us. We'll make a quick turnover once we reach the advertised 7:05 time. Tammy, you want to tell a funny joke? No, not tonight.
Do you have jokes to tell?
No, Dad's too tired.
I'm looking forward to the destruction of documents tomorrow. I'll be in your department for it.
Items A through I. Get to sign all those.
Get to go hang out with the ladies.
Need some good elevator music. Do you have a joke? Oh, that's a bummer. No, thank you.
Afterwards.
Not in the public corner. All right, I now have 7:05, so I'd like to adjourn our regular meeting and open the public hearing for PC 24-16, which is a conditional, or I'm sorry, a rezone, sorry, from office professional to general business. If the petitioner is here, would like to state your name and address for the record. Give us an overview of the request. Will, yeah, will you hit the green, the gray button at the bottom so the green light is on at the base of your mic?
There we go.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll do that again.
Thank you.
Jim Butler, PEA Group, address is 1849 Pond Run, Auburn Hills, Michigan 48326. We are here on behalf of the applicant, Orion Crossing LLC, requesting the rezoning of the parcel at 11:05 South LaPierre Road from office professional to GB. Subject parcel is located on the east side of LaPierre Road, south of Clarkson Road. It's a single parcel comprised of approximately 1.15 acres. It's the current Oxford Bank site. It's located south and west of the existing Meyer store, and it is the, to the north of the existing dental office. On the screen, to the left is the current zoning map. Our parcel is currently zoned in that turquoise color, surrounded by GB. To the right is the future land use map, which designates this parcel and the surrounding parcels for general business. If we are successful with this rezoning, the applicant intends to demolish the existing building and construct a single-story retail building that will comprise of retail uses, potential restaurant uses, and a use for the Oxford Bank. It'll be their new home. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Awesome. We will proceed with our public hearing. We, once we adjourn the public hearing, we'll proceed with reviewers and then deliberation on the case itself. So if you would, if you want to step away from podium, as you already did, if there's any citizens in the audience racing up, I don't see any, so I'll turn it over to the planning commission. Any discussion points during the public hearing portion of this case? Okay, seeing none. Petitioner, you have an opportunity to speak again, if you would, to answer all the questions and comments that came up.
I have none.
Wonderful. Okay, with that said, at 7:07, I would like to close our public hearing and reconvene our regular meeting. Don't go too far, since our item 7A is the same case. With that said, if you would like to add anything, you have the opportunity to do so. Otherwise, we'll turn it over to our planners review.
Yeah, I just want to go through one other slide.
Yep.
In your zoning ordinance, there are five criteria located in that, and I think your planner will go through this. Number one, the objectives of the master plan. This amendment is consistent with the master plan, showing that it is general commercial. The existing property in the general area in question, the uses are primary commercial in nature. The proposed would be consistent with those, with those uses. Three, the zoning classification of the property within the general area in question of the property, except for the existing dental office, everything in that area is general business. The rezoning would be compatible with the adjacent classifications. Four, the suitability of the property in question for permitted uses under the existing zoning classifications. The property has frontage on LaPierre Road. The width exceeds the requirements of the general business. The parcel is located along LaPierre Road, which is a primary commercial corridor within the, within the area, and the site can be utilized for a variety of general, general business uses. And then the trend in the area generally in question, including changes that have recently taken place in the zoning. Subject master plan is master plan general commercial, as are all the adjacent properties. The master plan and future land use plan depicts the LaPierre corridor and for it to be developed in a commercial manner. So we feel we meet all those criteria. So if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
All right, at this time, I'll turn it over to Kyle or Hartman for their planners review of the rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, commissioners. At least when Jim first went up, I said to myself, at least he didn't go over the factors of approval. And then he came up and gave, gave over the factors of approval. It's all right.
Take your job, watch out.
That's right. I don't know if he wants it. Well, I appreciate the thorough review, Jim, that you gave, and I do agree with the, our five factors for rezoning. The surrounding land use, both zoning and future land use planned are compatible with proposed use. Of course, once you do have a use, a specific use, you'll come before this body again for a much more detailed review through a site plan or special use proposal. We recommend approval of this rezoning.
Okay, thank you very much. There also was a review from our fire marshal and also our director of public services with no major comments, and I will just clarify that any rezone request is, we are recommending bodies, so the board of trustees is also involved in this process. So with that said, I'll turn it over to the planning commission for their thoughts, discussion. Someone would like to make a motion, we can put that on the table and further deliberate. However, we would like to proceed. Who wants to kick us off? I will, I guess.
Nothing Joe wants to make.
Joe, go ahead. Joe?
No comments?
Okay, okay.
Sorry. I moved that the planning commission forwards recommendation to the township board to approve PC 24-16, 111-5 South LaPierre Road rezone request, requesting to rezone 111-5 South LaPierre Road, parcel 0914-226-004, from office and professional to general business. For the application date stamped received 4/4/24. This recommendation to approve is based on the following findings of fact, that this request meets the objectives of the master plan. It's aligned with both our current zoning as well as the future land, land use. Two, existing uses of property within the general area of the property in question are consistent, is surrounded by general business and a general business zoning, and this would just make it, it would conform to that. See, the zoning classification of property within the general area of the property in question, again, this piece of property is surrounded by other commercial developments, with the exception of the doctor's office just south of it. The suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning thing classification. It meets all of the proper frontage requirements and so forth for this type of development. Then the last one, again, this request to rezone from OP to GB is consistent with all of the developments surrounding it, and it is a major commercial thoroughfare in Orion Township.
A motion to have support.
Support.
By Mrs. Urbanowski for their discussion by the planning commission.
Got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
There is currently an access to the north, to the Meyer site. Is that going to remain?
This one right here, right?
Yes.
Yes, that'll remain.
And second question is, is there any intended use of the subject property? I know it's early in the...
What he's intending to put there?
Yes. Yeah, what we're proposing is to demolish the building. It's currently owned by Oxford Bank. The applicant is buying the parcel from the bank and going to be constructing a single-story building, which will house the bank and other retail and restaurant uses. Just curious if this was a candidate for a cannabis location. I don't believe so.
No, it's not in an industrial zone.
Further discussion. I tend to agree with all the items in the motion, and I do appreciate the applicant hitting not one, but all five of our criteria of a rezone. We tend to see some that hang their hat on just one item and think that it should be a slam dunk, which isn't always the case. So I'm in support of it. It's obviously consistent with the area. So additional comments?
One, really not, I was wondering about the Oxford Bank as well. We, we take tax payments at that bank from people, so got a little nervous about where, like the idea of not having to move that, so thank you.
Other comments? Any public comments on the motion? All right, motion to recommend approval to the board of trustees. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Gross.
Yes.
St. Henry.
Yes.
Urbanowski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Lovett.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention. We'll see you in a few months.
Sounds like a plan. Seeing we finished our new business, that leads us to item 8A, which is a township-initiated text amendment. John, you want to add anything? I know there's a few items in our packet, including a letter from, from Mark that I can read here. If you have any comments, walk us through.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're in the process of amending this language as discussed in our last meeting. Our plans are to have this draft language to you and be comfortable with it for the 15th, the next, 15th, the next meeting, at least in a form that we can share with the township attorney, so that they can give us the go-ahead to move it forward. I know that Tammy's team has done a great job on putting together a couple flow charts for clear-cutting and tree permitting, and also our engineer made some good comments in regards to if we're going to get much more strict, we, we perhaps want to be prepared for that, not only from a township consulting standpoint, but also to maybe take a look, and I'll incorporate this into the language, that would give them maybe some different incentives to protect trees rather than just paying into the tree fund. And we'll incorporate those into the language. But good comments last time, talking with Sally, who's our, my tree expert. She's making those changes and making it actually more stricter than the one that we actually provided, but also added some flexibility, as you suggested, depending on the site.
Sounds good. There was a letter in our packet from Mr. Landis of OHM, just kind of general feedback. We had a discussion and generally, you know, kind of in support of, of toughening up some parameters, but thoughts on toughening them up and incentivizing working around trees versus it just being translated towards, hey, we want money to replant trees. And if we were to kind of button up our tree ordinance, we might need to consider review times and kind of general parameters of what that means in SCULP, and I think that is a valid concern, and I think that's where some of our discussion from last meeting was about, you know, do we lower, you know, some requirements, especially residentially, and raise others, you know, because it's like a survey costs X, right? A survey with trees costs quite a bit more. So just real impacts to projects and things, but I do think, you know, overall, just that fine balance of protecting our trees, but also being reasonable with applicants and residents. So any other comments on that topic? Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
I would like to combine the ZBA issues of the fencing with this issue. One of my neighbors across the street from where I live has stuck right, not perhaps not on the property line, but Indian Wood Road, close to the property line, about 10, oh, six-foot arborvitae, just brand-new, just planted. It makes my heart sing. It's a fence, but it's not a fence. It's green things growing, and you can't see through them to see his house, or her house, or it, its house, whatever house. And I just think if everybody did that, look how great it would be around here. That's all.
Understood. I agree. Any other comments? Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry that I wasn't here for this conversation, but I did listen to it, and I agree with you, Mr. Walker, that, you know, we've gone from, you know, kind of like overlooking it a little bit to really kind of strengthening what we're, we're saying, and I'm, I'm proud of us for doing that, too. So I think that some of the things that Mr. Landis said, they're great points, incentivize rather than penalize. And then he mentioned here something about an arborist. We do have someone, okay, got it.
OHM.
We do, but I mean, he works for, for Parks and Rock, and they have, I mean, look, the parks and trails and everything we have. If we're talking the time to go out and check a site because they want to do this, I mean, that is a full-time arborist for planning and zoning. Again, we have the consultant that has someone to look at the plans, but if somebody's going out to, you know, a single-family home and they want to do this, and who's going to go look at it?
Right.
Who's going to go do that?
Yeah, I, I agree with the concern, but it's not much different than the research we do with, you know, how accurate a civil plan is, or, you know, things along those measures. I mean, we, we entrust there's some of that, and obviously there's errors, there's actions we can take. But to me, I feel like we have enough resources where it's like, hey, there's, we're meeting the, the spirit or the intent of what's there, you know, aerial images, our site walk committee, various components. I mean, I think we all could agree where it's like, hey, this is a pretty heavily wooded lot, you know, and maybe just food for thought, right? For the commission and for the site walk committee, you know, maybe that's where OHM's arborist can kind of, when we do have something, can walk us through some of those parameters of just, I don't know, things to look for, I don't know, 20-minute training component, right? If there's something there, but just thought, you know. We're, we're kind of visually validating what we're going to see in our packets.
What I would like to do is, is this email came in today in the middle of a very busy afternoon, so I would like to reach out to Auburn Hills, since you use that as a specific example of all the things that were fallout of a more intense ordinance, and just talk to them and, and, you know, whether they can send me an email of, did you think of this? Did you think of this? And I'm not saying that the direction you're going, I'm opposed to, I'm just saying that, that, you know, hearing him bring it up from his exposure with Auburn Hills are a number of things that I think we just need to consciously say, yep, we know it, yep, we know it. Again, is it an increase in staff? Is it my staff? Is it paying a consultant? All of those things.
I think that's a fine idea, and I, if I step back to your comments on the arborist, I mean, some communities do, do use an arborist. I know that, for example, in Northville, if you cut a tree down in Northville, arborist has to go and look at that tree. Yeah, just a single fan, single tree in Northville, it has to be okayed. Maybe, we're not that far. We're not going to be that strict. Canton Township the same. Tree removals are reviewed by, by a forester and an arborist. They give a report back to the community as part of a site plan or as part of an overall project.
John, just as a question, couldn't that be a parameter if we did run into someone clearing the property without a, you know, some, where we would prompt that and say, hey, we need to have our thoughts on this, right?
Absolutely.
You know, and that's maybe an action to where, you know, we, we beef up that, that review and that consultant, where, or, you know, we're looking at a 77-acre site, right? Like, we want to make sure we're kind of agreeing with the general gist, but I don't know, I think food for thought down the road, you know. I'm sure we'll come up with a, a good ordinance solution, so.
We will, and I, and in regards to Mr. Walker's question on fencing, I think this kind of dovetails into what'll be the next phase will be updating our landscaping section, and those kinds of things will be tied into that.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
I'm looking forward to it.
Just made Tammy's Christmas already. It's only May.
We only got, we only got three major ones that we're going to get done this year. Tree, landscaping, and PUD.
Yeah, those are small, easy ones.
And it's May already.
All right, any other closing comments on the topic?
What if we were getting some comments or some review by some developers as to the impact of the ordinance, just to see the other side of the fence?
Yeah, I, I don't oppose it, you know, to, to not kind of create these in a vacuum. I'm sure they'll be the other end, you know, of, of the perspective, but at the same time, I think that's valid to see and understand, and I do think, you know, we've seen a couple recently here where it's like we have people that, and applicants and, and property owners that are willing to work with us, right? But they, they need some further guidance, and I think that will help. But to your point, you know, the, the what-ifs or, hey, have we considered, you know, but I'm sure there'll be some upturn on, on some of our thoughts.
Be nice to get some of that before we...
Right, the public hearing.
Yeah.
Or at the public.
Yeah, I think their biggest issue probably, if we do share that with them, is going to be no longer treating the building out of the stormwater and utilities and the infrastructure areas.
Development area.
Right, the development area, so.
Any other comments? All right, thank you very much. We look forward to that draft ordinance here in the near future. Public comments, since no one else is in the room, we'll move along. Communications, we have none. Planner, reports and education, we kind of just went over similar. No committee reports or future public hearings. I have no comments. So, Mr. Lovett, any other concluding comments?
Nope.
Mr. Walker.
As usual, in three weeks, there's a library book sale. Seems like there's one every other week, doesn't there? But I think it's the 15th to the whatever.
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere around.
In May.
Awesome. We look forward to it. Thank you for that. Mr. St. Henry.
I just wanted to thank Tammy for setting up the Planning and Zoning Essentials workshop on Monday. I found it very useful, a nice refresher, good materials. Thank you.
Gross.
Piggybacking on what Joe just said is that I'd like to give accolades to the planning staff and to the chair for following kind of the best practices that were outlined at the, at the training session. I think it shows us that we are doing things...
I think it shows us that we are doing things in a sound, very practical way.
Mrs. Urbanowski. Go ahead, Tammy.
Along that same line, with our new education requirement is a verbal or written report, so I was thinking, and redevelopment ready, like to see it's on your agenda, that's why it's not on tonight, so the next agenda I will have under education report from, and the individuals that went, and I would think maybe just a group discussion on a couple things that you, you know, even if you say one of the best practices was X, and we're doing that, and it was, like you just said, Mr. Gross, or Joe, you said you picked up a couple things, so I think if the individuals that attended were to do, just do a little bit of, this is a couple things I got, or the one thing I got, then that would fulfill your reporting, so keep that in mind. It will be on your agenda for next.
It consists of good snacks.
Yes, it was a very good dinner. It was a very good dinner.
Fox Lunch is very good. You didn't tell us that there was a quiz or a report out.
Did you read your policy on continuing education that was provided last year?
Yeah, it was right next to the IT policy. Sorry, did I say that out loud? Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
I wanted to mention to Tammy that Commissioner St. Henry did take copious notes. The entire five and a half hours we were there, so perhaps we could all help him prepare a report on behalf of the entire group.
Homework, homework, but not in a quorum.
You just got volunteered to do the group project.
Yeah, I mean, bigger picture, I do want to just say, and I know we kind of echo it many times after, you know, projects, but we really do have one of the best, if not the best, planning and zoning departments in Oakland County. And I don't mean to just say that because I'm friends with Tammy and the staff, and I'm a resident here, but after doing work in a lot of townships and municipalities, we go above and beyond to the point that I'm usually talking blue in the face to Tammy, saying we're giving them too much credit or we're trying to figure them, you know, their problems out on our behalf too much. So we do a really great job to be pushing projects through, and I will say, you know, there are very few commissions that meet three hours twice a month on a regular basis. So kudos to everyone here who makes the commitment to read their packets and be here, because let's face it, it's a crappy job sometimes, right? So, you know, but we're here to do it, and even if we get beat up and get told that we can't plan ourselves out of a paper bag, we still show up the next meeting, so. Any other closing comments? You see how I kept bringing that one back in? Still haven't lived that one down.
And you didn't say right.
Right. All right, with that said, I have 7:28. I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Walker. All those in favor, please stay with "aye."
"Aye."
All those opposed, motion carries at 7:28.